Going to call this meeting to order. For all those that care to, please stand for an opening prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance. Let us pray. Lord, we ask for your wisdom and guidance as we come together in service to our community. We pray for our city, our council, and our staff as we make decisions that affect our community. May we all find purpose, hope, and strength, and may we all be a beacon of light in the world that surrounds us. Forever grateful, and in your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, thank you and welcome to Republic. We'll go ahead and open up citizens' participation. At this time, we'll open citizen participation. Anyone wishing to speak to anything not on the agenda, please come forward. Seeing there is none, we will close citizens' participation. Moving on to our consent agenda. I welcome the council to ask any questions or comments about item number one on the Seeing there are none, I now need a motion and a second for approval of the consent agenda.
Motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries eight to zero. Moving on to boards, commission, and committee schedules. City Council workshop will be June 5th, 2024 at 10:00 a.m. That's tomorrow. Board of Adjustment meeting will be June 6th, 2024. Well, it's been canceled. Planning and zoning meeting will be June 10th, 2024. Our next city council meeting will be June 18th, 2024. The next planning and zoning meeting will be July the 8th, 2024. Moving on to old business and tabled items. I now need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill 24-30 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries eight zero zero. Laura will read the ordinance by title, please.
An ordinance of the city council approving amendment of the zoning classification of approximately .23 acres of real property located at 935 to 937 North Main Street from Light Industrial M1 to Two Family Residential R2.
Do we have any updates from staff?
No updates.
No updates from staff. Does council have any additional questions or discussion before moving to final passage? Seeing there are none, I now need a motion and a second for final passage of Bill 24-30, please.
Motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. We're now going to take a roll call vote on our computers. Remember to click refresh. Motion carries eight zero zero. Item number three. I need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill 24-31 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries eight zero zero. Laura will read the ordinance by title, please.
An ordinance of the city council approving amendment of the zoning classification of approximately .23 acres of real property located at 936 to 938 North Walnut Avenue from Light Industrial M1 to Two Family Residential R2.
Do we have any updates from staff?
No updates.
No updates from staff. Do we have any questions or discussion from council before moving to final passage? Seeing there are none, I now need a motion and a second for the final passage of Bill 24-31, please.
Motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. We're now going to take a roll call vote on our computers. Motion carries eight zero zero. Moving on to item number four. I need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill 24-32 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries eight zero zero. Laura will read the ordinance by title, please.
An ordinance of the city council approving amendment of the zoning classification of approximately .23 acres of real property located at 918 North Walnut Avenue from Light Industrial M1 to medium-density single-family residential R1M.
Do we have any updates from staff?
No updates.
No updates from staff. Do we have any additional questions or discussion from council before moving to final passage? Seeing there are none, I now need a motion and a second for final passage of Bill 24-32, please.
Motion.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second. We're now going to take a roll call vote on our computer. Motion carries eight zero zero. Item number five. I need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill 24-33 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion and second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries eight zero zero. Laura will read the ordinance by title, please.
An ordinance of the city council approving amendment of the zoning classification of approximately .23 acres of real property located at 916 North Walnut Avenue from Light Industrial M1 to medium-density single-family residential R1M.
Thank you, Laura. Any updates from staff?
No updates.
No updates from staff. Does council have any questions or additional discussion before moving on to final passage? Seeing there are none, I now need a motion and a second for final passage of Bill 24-33, please.
Motion.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second. We're now going to take a roll call vote on our computer. Motion carries eight zero zero. Moving on to item number six. I need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill 24-34 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries eight zero zero. Laura will read the ordinance by title, please.
An ordinance of the city council approving amendment of the zoning classification of approximately .23 acres of real property located at 914 North Walnut Avenue from Light Industrial M1 to medium-density single-family residential R1M.
Do we have any updates from staff?
No updates.
No updates from staff. Do we have any questions or discussion from council before moving on to final passage? Seeing there are none, I now need a motion and a second for the final passage of Bill 24-34, please.
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. We're now going to take a roll call vote on our computers. Motion carries eight zero zero. Moving on to item number seven. I need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill 24-35 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries eight zero zero. Laura will read the ordinance by title, please.
An ordinance of the city council approving amendment of the zoning classification of .24 acres of real property located at 480 East U.S. Highway 60 from Two Family Residential R2 to Local Commercial C1.
Do we have any updates from staff?
No updates.
No updates from staff. Does council have any questions or discussion before we move on to final passage? Seeing there is none, I now need a motion and a second for the final passage of Bill 24-35, please.
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion and two seconds. Did you get that, Laura? We are now going to take a roll call vote on our computer. Motion carries eight zero zero. Moving on to item number eight. I need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill 24-36 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries eight zero zero. Eight zero zero. Laura will read the ordinance by title, please.
An ordinance of the city council approving amendment of the zoning classification of approximately 40 acres of real property located at the intersection of South Farm Road 101 and West Farm Road 170 from Boyce Mixed Use Plan Development District (PDD) to amended Boyce Mixed Use Plan Development District (PDD).
Do we have any updates from staff?
No updates.
No updates from staff. Does council have any questions or discussion before moving on to final passage? I now need a motion and a second for final passage of Bill 24-36, please.
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. We're now going to take a roll call vote on our computers. Motion carries eight zero zero. Moving on to item number nine. I need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill 24-37 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries eight zero zero. Laura will read the ordinance by title, please.
An ordinance of the city council amending Title VIII, Fees, Chapter 805 Fee Schedule, Section 805.050 Buildings and Zoning of the Municipal Code of the City of Republic, Missouri.
Do we have any updates from staff?
No updates.
No updates from staff. Does council have any questions or additional discussion before moving on to final passage? Seeing there are none, I now need a motion and a second for final passage of Bill 24-37, please.
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. We're now going to take a roll call vote on our computer. Motion carries eight zero zero. Moving on to item number 10. I need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill 24-38 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries eight zero zero. Laura will read the ordinance by title, please.
An ordinance of the city council amending Title VII Utilities, Chapter 715 Sewers and Sewage Disposal, Article 715.2 Use of the Publicly Owned Treatment Works, Section 715.190 Fats, Oils, Grease, and Sand of the Municipal Code of the City of Republic, Missouri.
Do we have any updates from staff? No updates from staff. Does council have any questions or discussion before moving on to final passage? Seeing there are none, I now need a motion and a second for the final passage of Bill 24-38, please.
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. We're now going to take a roll call vote on our computer. Motion carries eight zero zero. There is no new business for this evening. So, moving on to other business and resolutions. Item number 11, 24-R-28. A resolution of the city council authorizing the execution of an agreement with the Green County Extension Council for the services of David Burton to improve and increase community engagement in Republic. I now need a motion and a second to take up Resolution 24-R-28, please.
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. And we have Mr. Burton here this evening to give us an overview.
Thank you for your time this evening. A city thrives not merely on its infrastructure or its economic prowess, but on the strength of its social bonds. None of these bonds is as vital or impactful as the connections forged between neighbors. For this reason, a city should support efforts to build neighbor connections because it fosters resilience, cohesion, a sense of belonging, and place, increased engagement, and collective well-being. By investing in the social capital of its neighbors, Republic lays the foundation for a stronger, more vibrant, more engaged, and economically stronger community. For cities, there's no one-size-fits-all approach. Efforts often reflect the assets and interests of the people in the community. This resolution continues our effort to build a network of neighboring advocates and a culture that supports relationships among neighbors. Thank you for your time tonight in considering this resolution. I offer a couple of reminders. One, this resolution would lead to a memo of understanding with the Green County MU Extension Office. The funding does not go to me, and my salary will not change with or without the approval of this measure tonight. Secondly, I live in Republic, so I see the strain that growth has put on resident connections, our social health, our resilience, our cohesion, our engagement, our sense of belonging, our collective well-being. Each of these has real and measurable economic impacts, and they can be improved by starting in our neighborhoods with support for neighborhood associations, which should never be confused with HOAs. They're not the same thing. So, it has often been said that when we are born, we look like our parents, but when we die, we look like our choices. So, I hope tonight you'll choose to vote in favor of efforts to strengthen the neighbors and neighborhoods in Republic through a positive asset-based approach. I know my presentation is limited in time. I do have three updates that have happened since last month, if any of you care to ask about those updates.
Sure. I would like to hear your updates.
Okay. Why don't we continue to make some progress in these neighboring efforts this past month for the first time since before COVID. Pastors from eight Republic churches met together at my invitation to find ways to collaborate to support the health of Republic. We have a future meeting set to dream and to plan and to work on collaboration, and this will be done with help from the folks at Convoy of Hope. That meeting is coming up in June, that's second meeting. Likewise, after two years of working with the Greater Ozarks Board of Realtors on the topic of neighboring as community development, a group of realtors in Republic have started meeting and looking at how they can support this type of effort. There were 19 at that first meeting, I believe. And then, this week, I wrote a letter of support for the City of Republic regarding a grant that the police department is applying for to fund additional officers who will focus on domestic violence. This will allow other officers to focus more on neighborhood and community policing and hopefully allow us to grow our neighborhood watch efforts even further. As many of you know, I've been an advocate for the police in general and for the Republic Police Department specifically for many, many years.
Thank you, Mr. Burton.
Thank you.
And we have a citizen here this evening that would like to speak. If I can call forward Mr. Brian Smith, be speaking against this resolution. Could you probably please come forward and give us your best three minutes?
All right. Brian Smith, mine's from North Oakwood. Some of my points have already been hit, apparently. You know, I must have kind of heard about what I had to say, but I'll go ahead and say it anyway. A year ago, when this money was given to Burton, Clint Gerlick asked the question, "What does success look like for your program?" After hesitating and clearly not having an answer, Burton came up with more HOAs. Well, after a whole year of his program, his own report states that he's not created a single HOA or even made a list of the existing ones. He's failed by his own metric of success. I sent all the councilmen some links. I trust you saw Burton's Hillary Clinton Join or Die video and his "Defund the Police" article. I think we need to reconsider if supporting his far-left rhetoric is in line with the values of our citizens. Social programs like these are not duties of the government. They are the activities of the private sector, and the government should not be providing funding for social capital.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. So, moving on, do we have any questions from city council? Mr. Neal.
Mr. Mayor, I would question, how many residents has this program interacted with in the last year? Who can answer that? I would defer to Mr. Burton.
Off the top of my head, I'd have to do a little calculation looking at our reports.
Mr. Burton, could you please talk into the mic?
Yeah, could we have you come back up here to the mic, Mr. Burton?
Sure.
Thank you very much.
I wouldn't want to give a number off the top of my head without looking at our impact reports that I have to submit. I mean, it would be in the hundreds. This is not a one-person-at-a-time type of approach.
Sure. And I have a question of, how do people find out about the program? Until I was on city council and got added to the email list, it wasn't something I was aware of. So, how do most citizens find out about it? What's being done to kind of broadcast it?
Using some social media, using the avenues that were allowed through the Commonwealth, the Green County Commonwealth, have a weekly column in there. One-on-one discussions, working with advocate groups to pull people in. This is one of those things where you are seeking out opinion leaders that will help move the project forward. That does not necessarily mean you're looking for mass audiences yet. I would say too, I think it's important to note that, you know, the proposal to the city last year on what we would do to pursue neighboring connections was a little different from what the council ended up voting for and deciding they wanted to do. And part of that, I think, was the city's, the council had had a meeting talking about wanting to have increased engagement with residents and that this might be a way they could do that, that they could be more involved with their neighbors and take a bigger role in this for engagement. I don't think that's exactly how that has played out this year, and that was not really the original proposal. So, we did have to kind of think on our feet as a committee and flex and do some things differently. And it's kind of an entrepreneurial approach, and you're throwing things at the wall to see what sticks and what works best in Republic. Because again, there are cities that have plenty of neighboring programs. And planning, within the planning department, that's not the case for Republic. That's not what I'm advocating for. But it takes a while to find that sweet spot and where we need to be focusing.
Thank you, Mr. Burton. Do we have any other council members with any questions for Mr. Burton or for staff? Mr. Fields.
Are there any other groups around that could possibly fund this or anything? I like the concept of the program. I just don't know if it's a government function to pay for it.
Yeah, sure. Actually, I think what you're paying for is my consulting services and educational work. This is not something that's unusual or made up. Forty percent of my position is funded through other grants and partnerships just like this. That's the way the University of Missouri operates through extension, and where I focus my time and attention is based on where those funds come from. So, my other funders have me focused in other areas. Leadership training, another one of the partnerships does focus on neighborhoods, more of a statewide focus and effort. You know, if there's another agency or organization that wanted to be a partner, that's always part of what extension does. I just know that when I step back, someone from the state level of extension can come along and say, "Hey, we have this new grant that's come up, and we're putting you on this grant now." And it wouldn't be neighboring in Republic.
Thank you, Mr. Burton. Do we have any additional questions from city council? Mr. Neal.
Ask one more, Mr. Mayor.
Absolutely.
I've seen noted in a couple of different places, like mission trips, neighborhood mission trips with some of the churches. What does that mean? Or what is that?
I think, I'm not sure.
One of the ones on our administrative report has Brookline Baptist Mission Trip.
Okay.
Last week of June, first week of July.
Yes. Well, first of all, anytime you take an approach like this, you're looking at all groups. Republic's made up of a variety of citizens, those that attend church and those who do not. And so, we look at programs for all of those types of approaches. Neighborhood Mission Trip is something that I am piloting with Brookline Baptist. It's something that has been on paper. It's really more of a, I would call it a service type of approach, service-to-your-community type of approach. And it is very much a pilot project that Brookline has agreed to pilot. And so, they're taking two weeks within their context of their church, looking at what it means to be a good neighbor and getting their members to take a service approach in the City of Republic.
Thank you, Mr. Burton. Mr. Cameron.
Mr. Mayor, so I want to add a little context to how we got here so that there's, because I think that that's something you're asking. I want to go back to a work session that the council had. I'm going to say it was March of '20. Because when did we bring this? When did this come before the council? Was it eight? It was '23. In March of '23, we had a work session. And during that work session, we pulled the council as to what they wanted to see, and one of those was better communication and engagement with the community. And the discussion was over to hire a PIO and pay. So, if you think about what the cost of a PIO was, if you pay $80,000 plus 40%, that's another $32,000, you're into $120,000 a year just to communicate with. And if you're doing that solely through social media, that's not the only form of communication. So, in that conversation with the council collectively, there was no real direction as to what to do of how to improve that engagement. So, Mr. Burton approached the city, and we're like, wait a minute, you've got 95 people to show up to a neighborhood barbecue. What if it would say if you would help coordinate these, and we would bring our city staff into those places or council members to engage the community to learn more about what it was? It was never a social program. It was how to utilize citizens, bringing citizens together that may not otherwise show up into these venues and talk. So, it's like, it was actually trying to bridge, and still is trying to bridge, a gap. Because one thing that I keep getting asked is, what are we going to do on the PIO side? Like, well, is it really value-added to have someone? And I'm not saying that, no disrespect to the PIO profession, but it's like, that's a cost in trying to restrict and reserve it. Trying to do this, what was it, $15,000 was really the key objective, was how do we try to create an environment where council members could go out and socialize in those areas where they may not otherwise? If you try to do that at my house, okay, that's you, the government, trying to just provide me more information that you want me to have. So, this is a different environment that we didn't set up, that we could go into and maybe answer a few questions as to what is public safety doing, what is the fire department doing? That's what the original intent was, was to bridge that question that started in March of 2023 with the survey of the city council in that work session. So, that's not a question you can answer, but I just, when we're sitting going, what's the background in fairness? That's the trigger I would like to share, just to clarify how we arrived at the original agreement. And as Mr. Burton clarified, it didn't quite work like that in the overall. There was a lot of how to make that, those pieces work. We never talked about mission trips. That was never, I think he's just showing the whole body of the work.
Right.
But our intent was to utilize those, if there was 35, if there was 100. And I think the last one I saw, when there was a council, or two or three council members went to one of them during the election process, that was the original intent for people to connect with our elected officials a little bit better than what we were seeing. So, just to add color to the conversation.
There are a lot of different models for that, but a lot of it depends upon the role that council or staff wants to take with them. I mean, one of the things we looked at was an example out of Peoria, Arizona, where they do their, when they have a public hearing coming up, say it's going to make an adjustment to an intersection. They pitch a tent, and they pass out flyers in the neighborhood around the affected area, and they have a big meeting right there at the side of that neighborhood where it's going to be impacted. They like take that meeting to the people in that area. They've had great success in doing that and engaging the public in that way. That was one of the things we talked about. But that's, some of the decisions to do that are a little above my pay grade and my decision-making here in Republic. But likewise, any council member, my offer still stands, if you want to try and do a coffee or a block party with your neighbors, I will show up and help you. I'll show up on my own time. I'll bring my Keurig, and we can have a morning coffee with donuts, just like we did at my house with the council members that were running for office. And it was well-attended, including people that are here in this room. So, we can try any number of things. I'm open to all sorts of ideas and just here to advocate. And sometimes, if you have a question, may be able to point in a direction and say, "That's worked well here," or "That hasn't worked so well here." You might consider that. That's part of this, too. And as well as doing educational types of events and advocacy for that.
Thank you, Mr. Burton.
Is that answer?
Do we have any additional questions from council while we have Mr. Burton up here? Have any additional questions for staff? Thank you, Mr.
Okay. I wasn't here on council in '23. Did we, I mean, does council bill, staff bill, that we got results from this?
Well, that's a great question, because one thing about this, in the middle of it, we would agree that it was not, what we were intending in the disconnect in that was, what we wanted to do was not lead it. Like, as a consultant, tell us where to be, when the meetings are going to be held, and we'll show up, and we'll be available for that. I don't think the response from the city when those events took place was as robust. So, I don't necessarily know if we responded to the opportunities like the availability... So I don't necessarily know if we responded to the opportunities like the availability was until the very end whenever people showed up. So I can't really necessarily say that that was on the program, but we were trying to find a way to address the council's need to get more engagement. And this was, and since there was no real feedback as to what that would look like, he presented an option to that that was actually much better than having nothing at all. And so I believe, yes, we met those objectives, but I still think the question of how do we get out into the community and talking about what the needs and bringing that into this room is important because I'm still not sure we get all that through surveys that we mail out to people every three years. Now granted, is that the council's responsibility to be going neighborhood to neighborhood and finding out what those things are? Do they have the time to do that? It was just trying to find a way to bridge it. So I think it was a win-win in certain ways. At the same time, does government need to be involved? Or does it outside need to be involved in government work and doing those things? That's a question that we wanted to present to the council to consider as that or hiring a PIO. How do you want to address the engagement piece of it? And is this a viable solution continuing to move forward to build upon that or not? Which is why we're presenting it again.
Mr. Harder, did that get your question?
Yes, it did, thank you.
Yeah. Does anyone else on the city council have any questions for Mr. Burton or for staff? I think that took away our questions. Thank you, Mr. Burton.
Alright, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Cameron.
I need to clarify, just from, you're asking to speak. How it, it's required to write it in advance to be on the, so I don't know if somebody wants to comment on it. I'm not sure we could really open that up.
Are they wanting to speak on?
On this issue.
On this agenda?
It's up to him. I, I would, I thought it was below.
Okay.
There are a lot of citizen comments.
We just need information.
You just need to state, you just need to state your name and then fill the document out.
Name, name and address and then fill, fill this out afterwards, please.
My name is Rebecca Jones. I'm a Realtor and my address is 266 Sedan Lane. I am a part of the GSBOR community development team. I am not speaking on behalf of them. I am the chair of that particular committee. And we have actually based our entire program off of the MSU, or the MEU extension in regards to the Good Neighborhood Project. We have worked on building a team that is really used for this purpose as far as engaging the neighbors in order to create those communities. Springfield has four different sectors that we're currently working on in initiating this particular project, working on these called sidewalk talks in order to get those communities together in order to talk, create those relationships and bonds. Recently, we have expanded out to Republic. So the 19 people he talked about in regards to the meeting that was had recently was the meeting that we attended. Sue Carter and I both were leaders of that meeting. So the extension for this program in Republic has just really started to get rolling on our side. And we are seeing some extreme good success in regards to getting the communities together and letting them understand that we are all neighbors, we're working towards a better community. And also the Realtors in the area are putting their hands in the bucket as well to, in order to make sure that the growth that we're seeing, people are aware of what's going on and that we're trying to make a change and a difference from the ground level. So we as Realtors are working on increasing those neighborhood talks. So we fully endorse, as me as a Realtor endorses the MEU extension. And we hope to see more of the Republic Realtor community help and aiding in this, this program.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Mr. Smith, we've had our time beforehand. Thank you very much. Do we have any additional questions from council? Seeing there are none, as this is a resolution, we can call this immediately to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
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 All of those opposed?
No.
No.
So was that four noes?
That was four noes.
It's four noes, was it four noes and four yeses? So we have four noes and four yeses. Brings us to a tie vote. We're, we're at a tie vote for the resolution. My vote is no. Moving on to item number 12, 24-R-29, a resolution of the city council authorizing the city administrator to negotiate a developer's agreement with Republic 63 LLC for the installation of infrastructure improvements and the purchase of necessary materials for lot number seven of the Hankins Farm Plan Development District. I need a motion and a second to take up resolution 24-R-29, please.
Motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, and we have Ms. Haynes here to give us an overview this evening.
Good evening, Karen Haynes, Planning and Development Manager. The BILTS Department is requesting approval for the city administrator to negotiate a developer's agreement with Republic 63 LLC for the purchase of materials and construction of a water line for lot seven of the Hankins Farm Plan Development District. The map exhibit is on the screen for you. The installation of the water main infrastructure includes approximately 1,200 feet of eight-inch water main fittings, fire hydrants, and also aggregate to loop a proposed building. We are requesting authorization to purchase materials for the project, not to exceed $50,000. The developer has submitted preliminary plans for the construction of a new spec warehouse, which will serve as the first of several large-scale economic development projects and job centers in this particular area of the city. Resolution approval and subsequent successful negotiations for the terms of the actual agreement will require, require final approval of the agreement by city council on June 18th. Staff is recommending approval of the agreement.
Thank you, Ms. Haynes. Do we have any questions from city council? Mr. Neal.
Mr. Mayor, where is that? There's no road labels or anything.
Yes, so that is, the Hankins Farm development is at the northwest corner of State Highway MM and Sawyer Road. So this is directly north of the Amazon site.
Gotcha, thank you.
Do we have any additional questions from council? Seeing there are none, and as this is a resolution, we can call this immediately to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries 800. Moving on to item number 13, 24-R-30, a resolution of the city council authorizing the city administrator to enter an agreement with Burlington Northern Santa Fe Railroad for a preliminary engineering study of railroad facilities in the city of Republic. I need a motion and a second to take up resolution 24-R-30, please.
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, and we have Ms. Haynes here again this evening to give us an overview.
Thank you, Mayor. The BILTS Department is requesting approval authorizing, again, the city administrator to enter into an agreement with Burlington Northern Santa Fe for a preliminary engineering study with respect to railroad facilities located within the city. The agreement itself is a 50-50 partnership between BNSF and the city for an engineering study to include onsite and diagnostic evaluations and preliminary engineering of railroad facilities located in the city. This will culminate in a report, preliminary design concepts and cost estimates for potential projects to improve overall transportation safety in the city. The study will allow the city to pursue BNSF, state and federal grants for implementation of recommended safety and transportation improvements in the future. Additionally, the study will provide us with valuable information and identified alternatives for future transportation projects. The cost of the study is a not-to-exceed amount of $42,000. Staff is recommending approval of the resolution.
Thank you, Ms. Haynes. Do we have any questions from city council? Mr. Gergi.
So is there anything specific or just overall analysis? Is there anything, it's kind of vague, I guess, any specific projects that they're looking at?
What the study will do will identify potential projects. So we've had some level of engineering previously with some MODOT projects that have identified some closures with railroad crossings on state and local roads. This will expand upon that information and provide us up-to-date information. And what that will do will actually provide us like the basis to move forward with grants. There are substantial transportation grants relating to removing elements of traffic with railroad. So we will pursue those at the end of the study.
Would it be mostly safety, safety issues or possible rail spurs or anything that, or would it just cover across the board?
I would expect that this study will also identify possible locations for rail spurs in the area. We as staff believe that we have an opportunity for a rail spur or at least enough frontage in the northern area of the city. But this study should truly identify whether that's a possibility for the railroad.
Thank you.
Any additional questions from council? So I've got a question. Railroad noise, quiet zones, that's not a safety concern, is that?
That will not be considered for this particular study.
That was what I was assuming, thank you. Mr. Cameron.
Mr. Mayor, so originally where this started was, we started getting complaints about the trains blocking the intersections. I'm not 100% certain that this will address, whether they can or will. I can safely tell you that this will be the second one that I've done during my tenure with the city. The first one yielded three or four smaller projects with fencing around the schools. But the first one revealed, I believe, four crossing closings. 93 O'Neal, there was two more, but they wanted to do, so basically when that report was released and they met, they'll meet with the community due to a public hearing, that went nowhere. They reached out to everyone, elected officials, county officials, requesting that the deal be squashed. I just want everyone to understand, going into this, we're spending $42,000 to study it. The community will have a chance to communicate on it. But what we got out of the last one was there was an above-grade crossing at MM, which is going to be done with the MM extension. So one of the grade, one of those crossings is there because I believe the last cost was somewhere around $52 million to actually meet the study. And so when you go applying for grants and there's only about 1.9 million. So just, I want to have a realistic expectation of how much money and how competitive these grants are before we go into it. It makes us competitive to have the study, but make no mistake about it is, there will be some agony of things that are closed to accomplish that study. So when they go to close a railroad crossing to put an overpass in, that's when the public comment gets pretty heated. So I anticipate that that's what will come from this study as well, is some intense fellowship over closing railroad crossings as well. So just want to put that out there.
Thank you, Mr. Cameron. Do we have any additional questions from council?
So you're, we're talking about closings. So you're, you're talking mainly north, correct, where they're, where you're looking at this or is this?
No, this study will, it'll actually study the entire railway within the city limits of Republic. So it'll study all facilities within the city. The, the goal of the study is not to simply identify any potential crossings. It's to identify all facilities, potential alternatives, and then preliminary engineering and cost estimates and give options that may be pursued at a later date. It's also providing all of the data that we would need to pursue any type of grant opportunities.
To Mr. Cameron.
Yeah.
Would this come back to council?
Yeah.
If before doing anything further after the study, you would have to come back to council beforehand.
Yeah, it was, it is, it would need to come back. And I, I would just want to make sure everyone understands what to prepare for because anytime the railroad's involved, they're going to try to improve safety to eliminate where car and train interact at at-grade crossings. And we have several in our area that will have to be addressed. One of them that's going to be closed is MM and 60, so that's given. So let's already improve the safety for that one aspect. But we've got to figure out, I mean, but how they can work on, I don't, I don't know if actually it'll address trains stopping in the middle, but if there's a way to improve their flow of traffic through that we don't have to stop them, I'm going to be sure, almost be certain an overpass will be included in that work. And so that'll help people where there's the concern of traffic being stopped for four hours at a time or cars being in the way. And those of you that have not been caught in that for two hours or watched it just sit there and just want to, you know, anyway, we'll speak nice tonight. But I, I think it'll yield some interesting information, especially the rail spur out north with our industrial site. So I think there's some serious value there, but I think there's going to be pieces that will yield some difficult decisions if you want to proceed with grant applications on certain parts.
And that's, that's where my fear is. We can spend $42,000 on this, then turn around and they tell us when you spend 52 million here, so.
I think there's grants for that for safety. If you can demonstrate that there has been loss of life significantly. So I think there's grants to facilitate it to the railroad, maybe not so much to the city. But without these studies, you have no access to the grants.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cameron. Do we have any other questions, any other questions from council?
When you say studies and loss of life, is that potential loss of life? Or were you having to have some sort of incident here to qualify for those grants?
No, they.
Just for clarification.
Okay, thank you. For clarification, they actually do track fatalities. They track where there have been near misses. So they keep a pretty accurate record of where they're seeing an increase and then where they're increasing it. So they're always looking for how to evaluate that. And I think in the first study, they actually identified where the deaths had taken place. So they keep a pretty close eye on what's taken place.
We also track that information in addition to MODOT tracking that information. So that is a basis of information that we do have available for us.
I just, I have to wonder about the, the grants that you're speaking to, if that's what they're tracking. Tracking potentials here, I mean, it's a little unclear.
Yeah, the study itself is going to, again, just really identify the railroad facilities and provide us a basis of alternative options for addressing safety improvements along the corridor.
Any other additional questions from council? Thank you, Ms. Haynes. Seeing there are none, and as this is a resolution, we will call this immediately for a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries 800. Moving on to item number 14, a presentation from jury university on the downtown revitalization study. We have Mr. Connor Lizell here with us this evening. Welcome, Connor.
Hello, thank you for having me. My teacher regrettably got sick, so he only got me today. So to begin with, we started a revitalization study with the community, the Center for Community Studies. 19 students participated this semester, a lot of which are pictured above but listed below. 70 community members wound up helping participate in several meetings, which I'll go over here in a second. It varied between the community at large, city administrators, the city council members, the property and store owners and various other local residents and things of the sort. There was also not listed here, people that we interviewed throughout our personal time down there, but we can't keep track of all that. But so during this spring, we had three community meetings, which were organized with Republic citizens and the CCS team. The first one was a bit of a workshop game. So the first part was a goal. Each group was consisting of hopefully a mix of both residents, store owners, council members, staff. And they chose one goal out of a deck of, I believe, five or six. Deck's got bigger, so objectives had a bigger deck. You chose five. Same with methods, I think there was 25, you chose 12. So each person grabbed a specific deck. They chose which one they liked and it was a discussion amongst the city, the community members, all of above, about which would be the focus. I believe we had six total tables, so there are six posters that were, maybe in your possession now, but were in the possession of jury university with, I believe, about 36 or 40 residents, comments, concerns, and things of that sort. Moving on to the second, I'm sorry. The primary goal was, that was realized, was that people wanted a live-work-play district, something that people can go to, they can work there, they can hang out there, all of the above, something to spend time, things to create more of an opportunity to be there, as well as enhancing the small-town character that Republic uniquely has around that area. There is very rich history. We have the Historical Society, for example, there. To, and also to improve the economic vitality of the businesses. We've got several different businesses, but we do also have vacancies. So there is, there is opportunity there, as is, for opportunity later down the line with land and things of that sort. Other takeaways, I'll just hit a couple. Further, furthering the historical image, because one of the greatest concerns we as students had was historical downtown, what makes it? students had was historical downtown, what makes it historic? A lot of people had trouble answering that. It's historic for a reason. So a lot of that was, how do we continue to throw this image at the wall? As well as upgrading the appearance, bringing greenery, beautification, things of that sort, all of which are in the book, which I believe all of you have received. So now moving on to meeting two, we as students, the 19, divided up into four groups and came up with four different proposals. These were just first passes at the project. However, we, it allowed us to realize that each one of us had different ideas of what each community member that we interacted with displayed. And so we wanted to create unified facades in one project, and that was the main focus. Or maybe there was more street improvements in another focus, greenery in another. And it really helped show that, like, what we were thinking. And so in the second meeting, its main focus was, here's what we think, what do y'all think? And so each community member had a green sticker sheet and a red sticker sheet. They went around and they said, we don't like this, or we like this. And so a lot of that helped us then go back to us before the third meeting, really kind of delve into what that looks like for the projects and what was, what had positive feedback, what had negative feedback. And so a lot of the positive feedback was creating downtown parks. What does that mean? Well, a lot of people mentioned gazebos, botanical garden, public spaces, things of that sort, as well as promoting new destinations, restaurants, cafes. One very smart kid said an ice cream parlor, as well as creating public parking lots. A lot of things that they thought they were lacking, we touched on and we got some feedback on. And now, oh, so that was, then going into meeting three, the slide must have gotten loose at some point, where my team, we all came together and developed the final proposed project, which was selected by our professor, and really heavily focused on, we learned a lot. We've got a project that we think is the forerunner. Let's put a lot of effort into that, and let's get it to standard. And so during this meeting, we presented to the community of what our final recommendation is. We will touch more on the specifics of that in a second. However, this was an opportunity for us to be like, we would love further comments, but here's what we are. Our semester's ending. These are the things we like to talk about. We wanted to add traffic calming devices. A lot of complaints, for example, seemed to be focused on how fast people are going through, and if we're trying to create spaces where people are walking around, you can't have anybody just blazing through. So things like that, as well as narrowing the streets to add more space for people to walk, beautification, as I previously said, connecting to J.R. Martin, things of various, various different solutions that we saw to try to really hone in on in this project. As you can see, there's a couple photos of myself pointing at the project, as well as some other community members watching us during the presentation, and one of our diagrams of what potentially some of the traffic calming devices and other things that we had recommended kind of next to each other. So moving along, that on the left is the final site idea that we created for the project. You can see a lot of greenery. There's several parking lots, but like any other plan, it needs to be phased. So in the first phase, which is going to be kind of where a lot of where the first bit will be focused, our recommendation said widen the sidewalks, let's get some people on their sidewalks hanging out, as well as parallel parking, increased opportunities, trying to use what's there to our advantage on directly Main Street, as well as other various things. We have plenty of space in certain areas, we don't in others. So we wanted to take of the current opportunities to create momentum for the next phases. And so in phase two, we're talking about connectors. So there's this periphery of buildings around downtown Main Street that are still associated. However, they don't, they don't get near the attention that downtown Main Street does. So how do we connect and how do we get people around and staying in these areas? So a lot of consolidating parking on the exterior, the raised connections, the central plaza, things of that sorts, really help get people to be able to park there and be there for longer. Moving on to phase three, we called it the City in the Park. This is more focused on the beautification and the greenery of the area. So we talked about trails, we talked about landscaping, we talked about planters, a lot of different things that would be super easy to plant or create as either temporary or permanent fixtures to help further momentum into further development. All the while, we hoped that restaurants and things would start coming in, phase four, being further opportunities. So all of the previous phases not only are to help the existing Main Street, but also to show investors and anybody else interested in helping, helping out with this project, if it was to go through, would be to now, let's get some money into the project and let's keep going after a certain point. We lovingly took the ice cream parlor idea to note, it's there in the top middle, as well as other ideas. We knew that there was other vacancies that were, we had opportunity for, so we wanted to kind of see like, okay, well, we know this building's vacant, this looks like a great spot for a restaurant, or this is a good, a good spot for an art gallery, something to keep people there that could be used once a month, twice a month, three, three, four times a month, every weekend, who knows? But just things that can, on a regular basis, keep people downtown at later hours. And so a couple other images, as you may have noticed, a couple of historical images have been placed throughout the slides. This is to help us just show you that we have not only seen the historical aspect, but there used to be a community surrounding downtown Main Street. And it really is a ghost town compared to what many of the stories we heard of what it used to be there. And that's not to say it has died. It is still alive and there are still people there, but a lot of people remember this fondly as a place where they went every Sunday, where they went every Saturday. The grocery store, the drugstore, the auto mechanic, things of that sort. Well, things have, they don't have any of those services anymore, so we talked about gathering spaces, most notably returning one of the existing city parking lots into a paved plaza. So something covered so people can go eat lunch after they work, furthering the point of the live-work-play aspect of things, as well as creating green pathways and things of that sort, something to really liven up the space a bit. As you can see, more historical photos of what used to be and what we recommend. So a little bit more of this slide is more on the work side. So shops, boutiques, coworking spaces, which, to explain a little bit about that, is just a space where you can rent a desk per day. If you don't want to go work at your office, but you want to go work somewhere else, instead of going to work in a coffee shop, you rent a desk, you can go work here. Or for remote workers, they may not have a place in their house, other than their dining room table. They can now go sit there and work instead. So to, to kind of put a cap on the whole thing, the first thing that we recommended overall is the formation of an advisory committee to further develop this idea and take what we have laid down to you all for actual recommendation and furthering of the project. This would be comprised of citizens who participate, who participated with us, so there are 70 listed, as well as collaboration with the city staff. The should be, I don't want to get this wrong, so I'm going to read a little bit. The advisory committee should be given a written committee charge and timeline by the mayor. There's an example below. As well as city-elected officials and the city administrators should only have an ex officio role and not lead the discussions. They should merely advise the citizen advisory committee. The composition of the advisory committee should be balanced of representation of community and interest groups, as well as store owners. The downtown Main Street revitalization advisory committee should be no bigger than five to nine citizens. It really should be just a group of citizens here to talk to you about potentially what they want to do to help further revitalize the space, and instead of you having 80 people in one meeting coming up to you wanting different things. So to, to put a final bow on the whole thing, to reiterate phase one, we recommended the signage, the streetscapes, events, parking, parks and public spaces, building guidelines, program, and arts and murals as a good place to start thinking about where you guys could go with revitalizing historical downtown Main Street. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lizell. Does council have any questions? Mr. Shaw?
What was the beginning of this collaboration with Jury? I don't remember.
What did start at the beginning? So it started was in 2017, we did a capital improvement sales tax that included improvements for the downtown. That was basically just some lighting, it was like $350,000 was allocated to do improvements. But where, where we came to it was, you had the old Public Works Building that was beyond revitalization. What do we need to do with the downtown versus just, like, what? I love the, I love the recommendation. Why does let the government be involved in us being as advisory? I love that part because that's not what we do. It's like, what do you want to do with the downtown and let other people decide what that is? So Trent Samms, who's in the back, thank you, he graciously took on the project as staff to reach out to Jury. He's like, hey, let's get some Jury students involved. And then that just brought, I mean, talk about community engagement, I don't remember how many people was on that list, but there was a whole bunch of people that came together around this concept, and it kind of just grew from there. I mean, I mean, what staff told me was like, the first night, you know, you might expect five or six people and it was full, the next time it was even bigger. And so I know that there was council members and the mayor was involved, so that's, it just kind of began to take traction, but I think letting an outside group do that work for you versus the city doing it was a great example of how it went well.
Thank you, Mr. Cameron. Does anyone else from council have anything to say?
I'd like to say something. I really appreciated that opportunity. There was a lot of stories that I'd never heard before from Republic, a lot of things that I got to learn. It was a great discussion on our history and our Main Street and a lot of the things that the citizens around here hold near and dear to their heart. So I was hoping all 19 of you would be here tonight, but since you're not all here, I guess you'll be our messenger and really send our message of appreciation for all the hard work of the Jury students. So very much appreciated, all your hard work and effort. Does anyone else from council have anything to say?
I don't think we have anything to vote on on that. So I'd like to just thank Mr. Connor for coming out this evening, and thank you to all the Jury students for all your hard work. Moving on to reports from staff, Mr. Cameron?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Connor. I think you did a great job of filling in for your professor tonight, so I applaud your effort for standing up there and, you know, having to see your own face in the slideshow and then acting, acting humble about it. I think that's pretty cool. I'm also a little disappointed, looking back to the agenda, that nobody wanted to talk about fats, oils, and greases in there. I was a little disappointed that we didn't talk about that ordinance a little more. But Representative Davidson, you're hiding on the back row tonight. I thank you for being here. We had breakfast this morning. What I appreciate, number one, is, and it's already in my notes before you showed up tonight, but we did get our reappropriation through the House and Senate. That's part of the process whenever you don't spend all your money from previous years. And so I was grateful that we got to see our seven and a half million that was from the original ARPA money, plus our $25 million that we were given in last year's agenda. We need shades in this room. And so I know Representative Davidson has helped us in that request in this year and fought really hard for our additional funding, but I can tell you, getting these reappropriations done and us talking about it, it's always great to have conversations about what takes place in the political process. And sir, you are growing through the ranks of what you're doing and seeing your influence and what you've done. We were talking about it today. Watching you from where you were four years ago, it's impressive to work, and I think that you deserve the recognition that people don't get to see what I get to see when I'm there and watching that progression take place. But he is doing a lot of great work for, for us in that capacity. Unfortunately, he didn't get to work on Senate Bill 979, which I wish he would have, but it's not on his side yet. It did not get any, any traction. We'll talk about that a little bit tomorrow in the work session, but I'm grateful to say that 979 on the annexation bill did not see any additional movement, and, but it will be brought back up next year. We'll continue to work on that. And our city council, our city attorney did a fantastic job of helping, and our outside council, helping to navigate through that bill. Just a reminder, tomorrow we have the work session, just a general orientation for the city council from 10 to 2. It will cover a lot of projects, but also kind of what the priorities are that we're working on. Looking forward to that, that conversation. Congratulations to the park staff on the opening of the rush. I'm sorry that I could not be there. I know that it went well, but just recovery took longer, and so I'm glad to be here tonight. But I just commend you all for a job well done. The place looks fantastic. I know the rain kind of set back and we had almost like a mudslide on the outside of the property, so if you didn't get a chance to go down the other side, you might be able to go out there and go tubing down the mudslide. We are working with MoDOT this week. We have a meeting Thursday regarding the MM project and Shure Creek Trail and MM Phase One. So hopefully that that project will begin to yield some sort of direction. Again, we'll talk about the MM project tomorrow on the shortfall of funding on the, on the project from I-44 to the Amazon campus. They did start work this week on the traffic signals at MM and I-44, which will be a safety improvement for us. I do want to report, unfortunately, there was a fatality out at Sawyer Road and near the Sawyer Road MM intersection, and our thoughts and prayers go out to the young lady that lost her life today in a tragic accident in that area by Jury Lane and MM. So that, that's the first fatality I know in that area, but also coming back through there on Sunday, saw a pretty nasty accident at the intersection at MM and James River. So I'm grateful that we're having these conversations with MoDOT, but we've got to get extremely more interactive in those conversations and serious about getting these projects underway, which we've been doing since well before Amazon ever came, and I'm looking forward to that discussion on Thursday. I can't re, oh, I'm sorry, Bob, but I'm going to go ahead and go ahead of you one bit. On the January, June 18th meeting, I made a note that there will be an agenda item for your consideration that will allow us to use one of the charter amendments that allow us to read two ordinance readings at one time. This is not because something is not left, this is an ordinance regarding the wastewater treatment plant on the funding project. So it's an ordinance that's required by DNR. Bob brought it up today. It was presented to us from our bond council. We're not going to be able to read it in two different meetings, and so it needs to get to DNR so we do not have to pay an additional fee to the cost of the wastewater plant. So I've asked Bob to at least distribute the ordinance, and it's, because it comes from DNR, it's not a lot that we get to change from the city, it's a template. So I've asked him to kind of distribute that further and advance in the Thursday deadline. So you will be seeing an ordinance like, what's this about? It's just so that he does not have, there's not a four-day window, like, okay, you're asking us to read it twice in one night, and he'll take care of it. Also, thank you, Lisa, while I was out recovering on medical, I know you kind of got thrown into it. It was not expected for me to be out, but you did a great job, and to all the staff that constantly have just taken over for those nine days. But other than that, that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Cameron. Moving on to reports from council. Do we have anyone from council has anything to say this evening? So I guess council has nothing to say this evening. Moving on to reports from the mayor. Moving on to closing, Lisa did an excellent job. Welcome back, David. You know, it was a really great job by all the staff out at the rush on Thursday, last Thursday. It's really impressive, all the work that went into that facility and getting that ready for all of the citizens. So thank you for all the hard work, and, and thank you for a great facility. I would like to thank, or I would like to congratulate Lieutenant Richards this evening, since he's blessed us with this presence. So congratulations on your promotion to lieutenant. Very much appreciate all your hard work for the citizens. Thank you to the Jury students once again. That was a tremendous amount of work and a lot of great conversations and a lot of great times. I really enjoyed that, and I know everyone that I talked to down there at all three of those sessions really enjoyed that. And so I think you got some bonus points. You put a picture of the mayor up there when you were up there too, so I think that worked out good for you. But really appreciate everything, appreciate all your hard work. The only other thing I had this evening was just a reminder about our workshop tomorrow, and I know I've already asked this question once, but is our workshop at the community center? Builds, workshop is at the builds department. So that is all I had for this evening. This evening, we do have an executive session. No further action, other than the announcing adjournment by the mayor shall take place after an executive session that is scheduled as the last matter on the agenda, unless otherwise stated on the agenda or is allowed per RSMO 610.02. Tonight, we will be going into closed session under RSMO 610.021.13, individually identifiable personal records, performance ratings, or records pertaining to employees or applicants for employment. Closed session, closed vote, closed record. I need a motion and a second to go into closed session.
Motion. Second.
Got a motion and a second. We're going to do a voice?
Yes.
Roll call, vote by voice, please.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Updike?
Aye.
Councilmember Fields?
Aye.
Councilmember Neal?
Aye.
Councilmember Gerke?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Motion carries eight to zero, zero.